All right, can you hear me? Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm waiting for to see if Veronica and I have any feedback. She's logging in now.
You got it, can you?
No, you're good.
All right. In a different room, so all good. I don't see you on yet.
We are live when we go on. When you go on.
Good afternoon, everybody, can you hear me?
You're on mute.
On mute. Thank you.
Testing one, two, three.
And testing one, two, three.
All good.
I think we're all good, all right. All right.
Recording in progress.
Did Hartley give me the go ahead?
Yeah, we're running, go ahead Veronica.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for 12:00 PM on Monday, June 21st, could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank present.
Chad Sexton Duranian present.
Veronica Cowe present. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's YouTube channel and it is also live on Channel 9. 1.3 Chairman's additions or deletions. Under Finance, I did add a Board of Health request for transfer of appropriations. So before we went, that will be put under Finances. That's the only addition that I have right now, I do have a few things under Communications, but we don't typically list those, so. Joe, do you have anything you would like to add? Or Chad, Joe first?
Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to maybe add the mailbox situation downstairs.
All right, so we can put that 5.1.8 mailboxes. All right, anything else? So that's Town Hall mailbox.
Yeah, that's the Selectmen's Town Hall mailbox.
Okay. And Chad, do you have anything to add?
I don't, I have things that I can put under the Liaison and Communications.
Okay, all right. All right, so moving on. First is the 5.1.1, which is review a letter to boards recording decorum at meetings. As I'm sure everybody is aware, there was a request at our June 15th meeting that someone from the public put something on our agenda during the additions or deletions. And we thought it would be a good idea for all boards to review the process for that and also for how one interacts at meetings. So we have a letter that was put together to go over this. And let me just get to it here. So this is for decorum in order at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And it's fairly long, should I read it into the record?
I think you should, Madam Chair.
Chad, do you agree?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to read this letter into the record. Decorum and Order of the Board of Selectmen. The presiding officer shall preserve decorum and decide all questions of order and procedure subject to appeal to the board. During board meetings, municipal officers shall preserve order and decorum and shall neither by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings nor refuse to obey the order of the presiding officer or the rules of the board. Every board member desiring to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition by the presiding officer shall confine comments to the question under debate and shall avoid all personalities and inflammatory language. A board member, once recognized, shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the pending officer, presiding officer, unless a point of order is raised by another member or unless the speaker chooses to yield to questions from another member. If a board member is called to order while speaking, the board member shall cease speaking immediately until the question of order is determined. If ruled to be in order, the speaker shall be permitted to proceed. If ruled to be not in order, the speaker shall remain silent or shall alter remarks so as to comply with rules of the board. All members of the board shall accord the utmost courtesy with each other to the town. The speaker shall remain silent or shall alter remarks so as to comply with rules of the board. All members of the board shall accord the utmost courtesy with each other to town employees and to the public appearing before the board and shall refrain at all times from all rude and derogatory remarks, reflections, or abusive comments. Board members shall confine questions as to the particular matters before the assembly and in debate shall confine remarks to the issues before the board. Members shall be removed from the meetings if they are due to comply with decisions of the presiding officer or for continued violations of the rules of the board. If the presiding officer fails to act, any member may move to require the enforcement of the rules and the affirmative vote of a majority of the board shall require the presiding officer to act. Members of the administrative staff and employees of the town shall observe the same rules of procedure and decorum applicable to members of the board. While the presiding officer shall leave the authority to preserve decorum in meetings as far as staff members and town employees are concerned. Did I say that right? While the presiding officer shall have the authority to preserve decorum in meetings as far as staff members and town employees are concerned, the town administrator also shall be responsible for the orderly conduct and decorum of all town employees. Any staff member or employees desiring to address the board shall be recognized by the chair, shall state name and address for the record, and shall limit remarks to the matter of discussion. All remarks and questions addressed to the board shall be addressed to the board as a whole and not to any member thereof. No staff member other than the person with the floor shall enter into any discussion either directly or indirectly without the permission of the presiding officer. Public members attending board meetings also shall observe the same rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct applicable to the members of the board. Any person making personal, impertinent, and slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board, or those attending the board meeting, shall be removed from the room if so directed by the presiding officer. If this presiding officer should fail to act, any member of the board may move to require the chair to act to enforce the rules and the affirmative vote of the majority of the board shall require the presiding officer to act. Any public member desiring to address the board shall be recognized by the chair, shall state name and address for the record, and shall limit remarks to the questions under discussion. All remarks and questions addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the board or the Board of Municipal Officers through the chair and not to any municipal town employee. No person other than members of the board and the person having the floor shall enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the board without the permission of the presiding officer. So, thoughts? Joe and Chad?
Chad, you want to go first or you want me to?
Well, I was the one that placed us in. Well, I was the one that placed us in the folder. I basically did research on the majority, I would say. I had looked at 15 or 20 towns on if they had any such decorum in order to their meetings. And this was kind of like what I put together from all of them.
Okay. Madam Chair? Yeah, I mean, I think we need to be able to run these meetings and have them in an orderly fashion. As far as the outburst that happened in our very first meeting in Town Hall, I was not impressed whatsoever. I think we as a community, we as board members, also board members of other departments, we're all better than that. If there's some kind of contentious feelings going on out there, they should be aired out outside of Town Hall and not in Town Hall. And I think we need to really stand by this and enforce this.
I am wondering if, I know it takes more time to do this, but I am wondering if I could take it and try to, there's a lot of words there, I guess is what I'm saying. And they're all good words. I think what I would like to do is take it and say, okay, this is how you address the chair. And it covers town employees, it covers members of other boards, and it covers the public. So I think I'd like to make it a little easier to follow. Somehow, there's a lot to read here and how do you know what applies to you, what category are you in? I think overall, it says the chair is the person that you address, no matter who you are. I think it says that if you're speaking, you state your name and your address if you're not a member of the board and you be recognized prior that you that you maintain decorum regardless of who you are and that the topic at hand is the one that's to be discussed. That simplifies it a little bit, but.
The issues were to be speaking out of turn, which I think is very important, even if, you know, we have, if we have an appointment and somebody is speaking and somebody from the floor shouldn't be asking a question directly to that individual, they should be going through the chair. The meeting that we run for Board of Selectmen is no different than the town meeting where everything is directed through the moderator here in our venue, it's directed towards the chair of the Selectmen. My, I agree with your thoughts, but I thought that maybe we could put this entire document in the Board of Selectmen policies and procedures and then break out the different portions that we send out to the boards and committees, you know, if we're going to discuss it at, or if it's going to be a topic of discussion at a department meeting and pull the relevant parts for that individual, that's just my thought.
Okay, so I think that there is value in the whole thing, so we could put it there and then break out the pieces underneath, I would agree with that, that's another way to do it. So, because everything is covered in here, it's just hard to find where you should, what is applicable to everybody and then where you should focus your participation.
Right.
So, anyway.
So, I get that, Madam Chair, and I think we have some very valuable employees, board members, they all know the policy, they all know the rules. I'll state it again, you know, I mean, we need, we're all better than that as far as town employees elected or appointed, we need to just pay more attention and we need to get harmony back here. And any grievances, leave them outside the room, I mean, it's not the place for them.
So how do we want to proceed with this? Should I put it in a policy that we sign and then amend? Or do we just post this? What do you guys think? Am I still muted? No. How do we get this out, I guess is what I'm asking.
I think we need to enact it, I think, you know, as what Chad has put in here, I think it's something that it needs to be said. I think that in itself should go to all board members, everybody. And I like your idea, Madam Chair, to simplify it a little bit, but I think it needs to be policy, procedure, we just got to move forward here.
Okay, so.
So if it goes to the Selectmen's policy and procedure, it has to have a first read in that, so would we consider that a first read?
Yeah.
I suppose we could, let me check the reg on that and I will add it then to the June 29th meeting. So my questions are, was this a first read? And then we'll go from there. All right. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to 5.1.2 Guardian IT Administration and Process. So Chad, this one is yours, I know I've put in, all employees, all Town and Hall employees can continue to use the help desk, so I've done that. I put in two requests this past week, mostly for access to files that we don't have from outside, but there are some files that I need in order to continue with the piece of work that I'm tasked with by the Selectmen. So I did put that in, I know I saw status on one come back, this was just Thursday and Friday, I think I did, and I'm not sure about the status of the other, but I did see that I had an email right before this meeting, so.
Yeah, there's questions, any questions, simple help, password issues, systems not getting, not booting, no internet connection, those are considered simple, first level help desk, you can contact the help desk as you normally would, just send them an email. But any account changes regarding adding and or deleting accounts must go through, must go through the main contact and the main contact right now is myself. The, going forward, just to preface this, I did have a conversation with Guardian. There is some information that is general that we can have in a open meeting, but I think there are several sections that would probably need to go in an executive session and talk more deeply in regards to our system security and that sort of thing. But what I'd like to get permission from the board with is I would like to conduct an IT inventory, which means that every employee would get an email that is asking what is, what is on their desk, desktop and all peripherals, which is any device connected to the system, any laptops, who has a laptop, who doesn't have a laptop, and all other devices, and that would mean any device connected to the network, so that would be a printer, it would be speakers, camera, anything that's connected to the internet. And I'd also need to know remote login information, if you're logging into the, if you're VPNing into the system, how the individual is actually logging into our system. That inventory, then I can bring it back to Guardian and we can discuss exactly what needs to be done. The second most important thing is for us to be able to get some education out to the employees, which I, both Guardian and myself feel is very important. And I'll be looking into ways in which we can do that, looking at network security, looking at what is phishing, spam, ransomware, all of that kind of stuff, as we know, there's a lot of things going on and I think a training in regards to what to look out for, what to open, what not to open, that kind of thing, needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. And then I had asked Guardian to come up with a working plan for immediate needs. I said something like two years, five years, and 10 years in order to, for us to become compliant with not only records, the electronic records we are storing here at Town Hall, but future digitization with departments, additional software and that sort of thing. And that's something that the BOS would have to discuss along with the town administrator when we get to that. And then, again, I want to be able to establish a future executive session that I can talk about some things a little more specifically with the board and I'd like to do that sooner rather than later.
So, we need a motion for that to allow you to move forward with what you just discussed?
Not until I get the information from Guardian, when I get that back, I'll present it to the board and then we can make a decision there.
What about a motion for the IT inventory?
Yep.
So, Joe, is there, could I have a motion to either Joe or Chad, either one of you, to proceed with an IT inventory for the entire system that Guardian oversees here in Townsend?
I make a motion that we have Chad move forward with getting a complete inventory of all town equipment, things that are connected to the Guardian, software packages.
My second.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowe, yes. So that piece we can start with now. I was wondering if it would make sense to put an executive session on our July 20th meeting, we have a meeting on June 29th, that was to take the place of the first meeting in July, since the first week in July is the 4th of July week. Our next meeting then is scheduled for the 3rd Tuesday in July, which is the 20th, and I have the 13th as tentative in case we would need it, and that would have more to do with hiring interns than anything else, an interim TA. So, anyway, I have the 29th and I have the 20th. Is the 20th of July too late for, okay, so.
I have, my next meeting with Guardian is going to be on July 15th at 9 o'clock in the morning, so I can gather that information and prepare it for the 20th meeting.
Okay, so July 20th, there will be an executive session for security purposes.
I will be out of town, but I will try to zoom in on that one.
Okay.
As long as we have that hour, right?
Right, yeah, we'll be doing, we'll have a Zoom link for it, so should be okay. All right, so an executive session on July 20th for security purposes for IT. All right, as far as the, as far as the education piece goes, I think I would like to add to that, also having Office 365, I know that there's online stuff available, but it might be good to work up a handout, and I can help with this, to say, if you want help with this, this is where you look, this is where you look.
Correct, there's, we have to have a general meeting to let them know exactly what the, what we can do and what we can't do within the network, infrastructure, and then what we as a board or, you know, what we approve is going to be the education for them, because there's certain components that will, again, because of network security, we can't really talk about now, but it's going to be specific to the town. So, yes, we can do that, but we would have to piece it together beforehand.
All right, the holdoff on that, and the working plan, we'll wait until we have an interim TA to discuss further, correct?
Well, I'll have input from Guardian on the 15th of July for what they're giving, I guess the most important thing is the immediate need that we need to strengthen our infrastructure, that'll be, we can talk about that in the executive meeting on the 20th.
Okay, I guess for me, I'd like it to be immediate needs, one year, so that's kind of immediate, within the next year, two years out and five years out. I think going beyond that is probably too, given the, although it doesn't change quite as quickly anymore, I think looking at 10 years is a little pie in the sky, not really.
The 10 years really is for equipment. Much like your maintenance plan on the police cruisers, it's that kind of stuff.
More capital equipment than anything, yeah, so that we can look at, but as far as a plan for structure or anything like that, makes no sense, okay, in my book, anyway. All right. Anything else on this, on Guardian IT, before we go forward? Joe?
I'm good, thank you, madam.
All right, moving on to the next, this is Finances. I have the interim accountant and the interim deputy accountant started on Friday, there were a few changes that we made to their contract, they, instead of being 1099 employees, they will be on payroll and the, and the rate of pay was decreased. So I would just like you two to ratify the contract, in other words, remove Section 3C and Section 4 from the contract that you have, but everything else remains, they are non-benefited because they are less than 20 hours per week. And that is pretty much it. It just puts them on payroll rather than as 1099 employees, which makes it easier to manage from, from the point of view of the payroll department and the accounting department and where the funds come from for this.
And is the effective date going to be the same or is it?
It would be the same effective date.
And that was last Friday?
Last Friday, yeah, June 18th, I believe it was.
Do we know what days that they are actually working? Do we know?
No, they are both written for eight hours minimum and more additional time as needed. This was all reviewed with Town Council, by the way, so. So right now, Terry will be the lead accountant and Dick will follow her lead, will, you know, do the work that's required based on what Terry sees. We also have to figure out seats in VEDAR, we only have five licenses, not six, so that makes it a little more difficult, but we hired two because we had one that didn't know VEDAR and one that didn't, so, but they'll work that out. We, so what we need is a ratification of the contract changes.
Do we do them separate?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move that we ratify the contract for Richard Sarason in regards to changing from 1099 to a.
Payroll employee.
A payroll employee. An employee with the same effective date, Corey and.
There is no Corey, we did not appoint with Corey.
So, as the same provisions we have.
So as the same provisions we have for.
For the initial.
With the with the hourly rate decreased by $5 an hour.
Yes, effective June 18th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. And is there another motion?
I move that we make the same adjustments to Teresa Walsh's contract in June 16th, 2021, ratifying the 1099 to a payroll employee and changing the hourly rate.
If there is second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, thank you very much. And those contracts are available, we'll do a resigning on those out of session. Do we have that on here? I'm going to add a motion, sign out of session.
I can do that, I can do that now.
All right, go ahead.
I move that we sign the ratified contracts to Teresa Walsh and to Richard Saracen out of session today.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, the second one was, or the third thing that I added today was a request for appropriations by the Board of Health. So let me pull this up. I don't know, I put it in the SharePoint, I think just yesterday. So let me see if you've, and I put it under ratified contracts because it was 5.1.3.
Yeah, I was, I was going to do that under liaison reports, what we can do here.
All right, so this was a request to take the last two months of fiscal year or first 15 days of the new fiscal year to apply to the previous fiscal year. The amount requested is 1,005 and it's to be transferred to the Board of Health General Revolving Account Recycling Center. That's where it's transferred to, to be transferred from the Board of Health Landfill Maintenance Account. And the balance remaining in the appropriation from which it was transferred is $3,000. So this is required an action by the Board of Selectmen with a dated meeting. So I thought we could take care of that today.
I can make a motion on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we transfer, that the Board of Health transfer in accordance with Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2006, which amended Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, that provides for year-end transfers between departmental appropriations in town without the necessary necessity of a town meeting vote, the amount of $1,005.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Joe Shank.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cowell, yes.
Madam Chair, I have a question, I don't know where this would fall in, but I do believe, I seen on SharePoint that the five departments asked for a similar transfer. When do, is that on the agenda coming up or what are we doing on that?
One minute, let me look and see. I, this, you know, the agenda is due two days before. And if I get things in in time to add it, I do. But if I have, let me just check, I might have put that on the Wednesday agenda. Did you look at the Wednesday agenda, Joe? I sent that out this morning and I'll send a vision to it tomorrow.
I want to make sure we don't miss that, though, so I know.
Okay. Yeah, and any appropriations like that need to get in this week so that they're actually held. So I guess this is notice for all departments. I know this was sent out in May for appropriations and it was reiterated at the staff meeting. So anybody that needs to transfer, to encumber funds or or transfer funds prior to the end of the fiscal year, please let us know. They can be sent to selectmen@townsmenma.gov. So I will look at that, I'm pretty sure I got those and I'm just not sure if they.
I'm just looking to, I want to just make sure, I want to sort of help. I just want to make sure that it's in here. Because I did read it, the five department chief did send it to me and I think it's in SharePoint. So I just want to make sure we address that for next week.
Okay, so if you have it, Joe, you're the liaison, if you could put it under the finance folder for a meeting on Wednesday? That, if I don't have it there already, that would be helpful.
All right, I'll search for it, I'll try to get that up so I make sure it goes back in.
Pull up Work Session Finance. So what I, I don't have that one in there. I do have insurance in there, senior write-offs, two different insurance issues. But I don't have that in yet under finance. So if you could add that, that would be great, Joe, thanks.
I'll try to find that email and I'll try to add it in there.
Okay, and I'm writing this down, so I look as well. So this would be.
One other, I guess that's fine. And then one other question I noticed on SharePoint that was put up. The consulting thing, when are we going to address that?
I think that's on the 23rd, under Finance.
Okay.
I have it under NFP invoice. I have two things up there, a mail and an invoice. I don't have a second invoice. So it's on under Finance on Wednesday where that will be addressed. I'm trying to keep our meetings to an hour.
That's fine, that's great.
You know, things that come in when I'm doing the agenda, I put on and then I move it to the next as we go on. So I will do that. All right, thanks, Joe. Anything else that should come to my attention for the Wednesday meeting under Finance? I might not have put on yet.
No, I think we're good if we need, at least that fire department pad on there.
Okay, all right, good. All right, I'm moving on then to 5.1.4, discuss the purchase and funding of the OWL device for in-person virtual meeting support. So if you look at 5.1.4, there is information on this.
Yep.
So Chad, do you want to talk more on this or?
I really focused my research on funding. I don't really know what we have left as far as the IT budget is concerned, if there is such a thing, the way it's separated. So we just would need to find, I mean, it's something I feel we definitely need as a piece of equipment here, but is it something that the town will get? Is it something that Teakham would get? And if it's the town, then where would we get the funding for?
Okay, so I'm looking at, this is again the May expenditure.
You're on mute.
Thank you. All right, looking at the May expenditure report. I thought there was equipment under MIS, but what I don't know is. So looking at this line, and again, this was 531 and we're now at June 21st. So this was three weeks ago. We have MIS equipment, there's an equipment line. Again, it says replacement equipment and we would not be replacing here, so we would have to look at that. But that line item has $7,000 in it. And we also have a line item for communications that has funds in it. But overall, we are in need of additional funds in this budget. So we could look at the BOS if we wanted to look at it that way.
Is that not fundable through COVID money? Because originally, when this thing, I first heard this back probably four months ago, I mentioned that to Jim and he kind of pulled up and he returned a call to me saying, oh yeah, that's something we should do and we can deal with that through COVID money. I mean, is that gone by now, so we can't use COVID money?
It's not that it's gone by, it's that if the money is in the budget, then we really should purchase it out of the IT or communication funding before the end of the year, which is next week.
I think it's.
If we have money.
What I don't know about COVID, and this is a question, the COVID funds, it's something that has to be researched and just hasn't bubbled up because the the time period for this, you can still expend funds, I was told, or I heard at the DOR meeting two weeks ago. But I need to get details on exactly what that means. Does, especially with the emergency order being lifted. However, parts of the emergency order are allowing us to still do virtual meetings for another year, just about. So I'll look into this, are they still available?
Would it make sense for us to say approval if we figure out the financing?
Yeah, I think we could do that.
So I move that we purchase the OWL pending the financing details.
Pending acceptable funding details, okay.
If anyone wants to buy it for the town, they're welcome to.
All right. I'm just writing this down, although it is recorded. All right, motion has been made and seconded to purchase the OWL pending acceptable, meaning either a place in the budget or COVID funding. So pending acceptable funding. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, we'll get more on that coming up. All right, discuss and approve the job description for the temporary BOS.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself for any of this conversation.
All right, then I guess we need you to leave the room.
All right, so I'm just going to leave this, I'm going to leave the room and I'm going to put it on mute and just text me and I'll come back in.
Okay, stop your video, stop your, you know, mute yourself and.
Video.
And we'll let you know when it's time to come back. All right, I worked on a posting for the temporary assistant to to take the time while to help us out in the BOS office. So Chad, did you get a chance to?
Absolutely, no, I did look at it. I think I am in agreement with this. You feel that eight hours is adequate?
I had originally written it as 10 and then I put it in as eight. I figured it was one day a week. We could, it would be nice to have more time, but even eight right now would be wonderful. So thoughts? We could do it for 12, which would be a day and a half.
Would we be able to do it like we had done with the other, saying a minimum of eight hours? And then if we needed to add to it, we could? Do we have to be specific?
I think we could, we could write it as a minimum of eight hours. It would just make it hard if, under the requirement, you know, the qualification requirements, if it's, if we wind up engaging someone who is already on staff, and this is an internal posting. I would imagine that they have other job responsibilities. So that's why I did it, we could do it as a minimum of eight. And maximum, I would probably want a maximum on this.
Okay, then I would, let's just leave it at eight for right now. And if we need to, we can always increase it if if we need to.
Then I'm going to rewrite it. Position is a non-union position, scheduled for, I'll take out the up to and just make it eight hours per week. Because that is ultimately what happened when we did this is is we, for the interim accountants, I had put in a range. And when the contract was written, they did it for eight hours with additional as required for each of them. So we could write the contract that way as well for eight hours. And I'll take out, I'll remove up to so that there's no upper limit. All right.
And I'm in agreement with with all of this.
All right, I did not, did I put a start date in here? I don't think I did.
No, there's no start date.
And I didn't, I don't think I also said, position will be, oh, yes, I did. Applications will be accepted until such time as the position is filled. All right, so I will make that one change. And is there a motion to post it internally?
I move that we internally post a position for a temporary Board of Selectmen Executive Assistant as outlined in this document.
Second, Veronica Cowell, second. All those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, I'll get that posted. I did, I had checked with Kate to see if we needed to run it by her and I don't believe we needed to. So, all right, that takes care of that one. The interim TA search. Oh, yeah, go get, go get Joe, thank you.
Okay, I'm back.
All right, so we're moving on to 1.6, the report on the interim TA search. I am hopefully going to get the posting up on the MMA website today. And I will post it under jobs on our town website. I am also going to recontact Mike Ward at the Collins Center and Bernie Lynch at Paradigm to see if they have any additional names on the list. I did hear back from the one resume we received and that person will know tonight whether or not the terms that they had were matched by another town. And if it is, that person will be taking that position. If if the terms are not matched, then they will come and speak with us. So that is where we stand. I haven't yet set out the email for the committee that we voted to have run by the the resumes. So I will do that today. So really, the interim TA search starts in earnest today. But I wanted to get the assistant, the interim, not assistant, the interim accountants in place. And so that's where my efforts were concentrated. So we will get that rolling today and hopefully have something before July.
Okay.
Your camera is off too, by the way.
Oh, it is. How did that happen? All right, back. All right, back on. So five point one point seven, the wall that heals. Before I hand off to you, Joe, I just wanted to say that I did put some uh, under news on the website. I did put something up. So please just proofread it and make sure, or let me know if there's anything that needs to be changed on that. In the red alert, I put the P F A S public forum, the public water supply forum that we are doing regarding the P F A S in the public water supply. I've put that under the red banner. So that's a little bit out of, thinking of the decorum, that's out of the realm of the wall that heals. So let's bring it back to the topic. So, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, Madam Chair, thank you. I I want to know, first of all, get approval. The newspaper has reached out to me. They want to just get a little bit of input as far as the healing wall. I don't know if you have any objections to me reaching out to the newspaper and answer any of his questions. You're muted.
Uh, there is a a policy on um, media contacts, so just check that, Joe, before you um, discuss with them. It's the only thing I would recommend. Uh, Chaz, your thoughts on that?
Um, you kind of went in and out when you were talking, so I didn't hear the first part of it. The the media, what, Joe?
Um, I'll I'll read it to you what I just received today from, uh, give me one second, we get the right one. Uh, from, I think it's the show over the one of the times here, from Jacob. It says, Mr. Shank, I hope this message finds you well, and you had a nice weekend. I am reaching out in the hope we may be able to set up a short time to speak later today or tomorrow to discuss the wall that heals exhibit, which will be coming to town next week. This is a very exciting opportunity for the local community. And during last week's selectmen meeting, I heard you talk about how it is an opportunity for the town to showcase itself at its best. In addition to speaking with local veterans, I would love to hear from you about what the exhibit means to the town. Our story in is centered around recognizing the contribution of local heroes and encouraging people to visit the exhibit when it arrives. I recognize that you are a very busy person. And your responsibilities include both your service as a selectman and running a private business. So I would be glad to coordinate around your schedule, and it just pretty much so gives his phone number. So how would you like to move forward with that?
Okay, so I've just pulled up the um, media policy.
Yeah.
That's on the website, on the selectmen's page. Uh, boards of members and committees, the chairperson of an appointed town border committee shall be the primary interface to provide all information to the public on behalf of the border committee. He represents the border committee in state, in stating border committee positions. Each board or committee member shall recognize that it is the responsibility of the board or committee chairperson to speak for and on behalf of the border committee. That said, any board or committee member may speak on behalf of the board or committee on a specific subject as long as he or she receives permission from the board or committee chairperson. That being said, each board or committee member has the right to speak for or on his or her own behalf, as long as she or he clearly identifies that is the case and any communications that are intended to be released to the public. So I think that as long as, since I'm the chairperson, if I give you permission to speak on the, on behalf of the board, I think it's fine. Do you both read that the same way?
That's what it sounded like, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then I I personally have no problem with, you've been doing the interface, Joe. So I think you should be the one speaking to the press on this. You know more about it than I do and can speak more clearly to the ins and the outs on it. And Chaz, are you good with that?
Um, I'm good. I I would like, though, if you could include somebody like Russell Jobe in that conversation as well. Um, because they're the ones from the V F W that really have all the logistics.
Yep, well, and and I will uh, give his name so that he can absolutely uh, reach out to him. Uh, Russell Jobe just Friday sent me a little bit more of an update, which I think we need to talk a little bit more about today also. And um, I I don't know, it was put in SharePoint, I do believe. I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to read it. Couple things he was kind of concerned on, so we'll stay on that topic, but that's okay. I'll 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 reach out to the press. I'll give Russell's name so he also can get contacted. So between all that, we're good. Uh, if that's all right with you guys.
I'm okay with it.
I I am.
Also, I don't know if we want to read in as far as a couple emails that Russell sent, and also pretty much so a schedule. It's not finalized yet, but I think we're running out of time, but um, we can I can read the the email that he had for a couple of concerns for the town. So maybe we can, I'll read this in and discuss a couple of them. So it says, good morning, Joe. We are in the process of completing the two ceremony itineraries. And I want to bring you up to speed on some of what we spoke about yesterday. First, the welcoming ceremony on July first, 5 P M. We are looking for a select person, selectman or other town representative to welcome our guests, volunteers, dignitaries, et cetera, to our beautiful town of Townsend. And the wall that heals at North Menlo Six Regional High School. So I am looking for a name and a brief bio of that person so we can introduce five to 10 minutes. Second, I spoke to Betty May Tenny about the Townsend band. And she will be asking band members to edit their practice about their availability on July 3rd. As she is unsure of who will be on vacation. In addition, we spoke about the cost and the sum of $1,300 was brought up as a top side of the fee. She did say that there are 30 to 35 members in the band, and they receive $35 per person. As in, as I mentioned to you yesterday, our budget for the wall does not allow us that option. I will be finalizing the groups for for the posting and retiring of colors, the rifle salute and all other areas this coming week, and we'll ensure you, ensure to get the complete program to communicate to the rest of the town ASAP. So I guess a couple of things. They would like to see the town banned there, and I I understand that they don't have money. How do we as a community, do we have any funding anywhere that would pay that so that they play off? No.
Okay, so I I can just. Yeah. All right, so I had a discussion with Betty May Tenny at the Simon Montgomery Talk at the library on Saturday. Uh, and I I just talked to her a little bit about this. She does not want to use band concert funds for this because her um, her budget is intended for the Thursday night band concerts, and it's funded pretty tightly. The other, and I was looking at funds from last year, because the 12,000 or so that is appropriated for band concerts from last year was not used due to the fact that we didn't have concerts on the common last year. Um, the issue that she pointed out to me is that was fiscal year 21, and July 3rd is in fiscal year 22. So um, I I guess another way to go, because those funds will turn back into free cash, is that we could just say, okay, we're gonna pay for it. I'm not really sure exactly how this happens. And then go to special town meeting in the fall to appropriate an additional amount of money for the town band line item. So.
For $1,300.
For $1,300, yeah. So that that's at least my thought on it, because um, she's right, and she is the one that chooses how those funds get spent. But and it and it is, we can't encumber it because it's for expenses in F Y 22, not in F Y 21. So uh, there we have it. I couldn't really find another appropriate place. There's a Memorial Day as well, but um, Betty May told me that she has put in requisitions for those funds because they were expended for the Memorial Day, etc., the, you know, the gun salute, etc., this past Memorial Day. So she's right, and the best I can come up with is to say we will uh, try to appropriate additional funds to that line item for next year, or I I don't know.
Can we, I I don't even know if it's legal or nothing, but I mean, can we reach out to the community and maybe see if any business people would be, you know, raise enough money to pay for that?
I I think that 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 would be appropriate for the V F W to do. I I don't know that the town can really do that ask, but I I believe the V F W could. Um, so I I guess has Russell Jobe, is that his name? Has he reached out, is he working with the V F W here in town? I don't know the answer to that question.
Yes.
I was going to have a conversation with him after our meeting today to see a little further where we're gonna go. They really would like to see the the military band there by all means. Or maybe just some individuals of the community could just say, hey, maybe they all want to just chip in. I don't know.
Um, would we be able to encumber funds from 21?
Foreign activity in 22? I don't think so. Um, unless, unless it was, you know, this was supposed to happen a year ago. I hadn't thought about that angle. This was supposed to happen a year ago, and it got pushed out because of COVID. And I I didn't realize that until the flag committee meeting the other day. So uh, perhaps we could do that. I could check with the Department of Revenue.
So I I believe we should have the town banned there. Um, I believe that we shouldn't have to ask other people in the town to pay for it. We can probably arrange to to have financing for that. We can find it within the the coffers.
Well, it it is, you know, the, I'm I'm trying to find quickly, I should have put a stick.
The problem we have is we're gonna run out of days, you know, I mean, because next Tuesday, that wall is coming through town and gonna get stopped setting up on Wednesday. So I would think by all means, we would need to have everybody, all the players. I I think it would be unjust for us as the board to the last minute, reach out to Betty May and say, you need to put your band together, you know what I'm saying? So um, I, once again, I I know Russell has been talking to her also. And so today, when we're done here, I plan on reaching out to our Russell to have a little more conversation, if that's okay with the board, so we'll know better, and see if he's gotten any more updates that we'll either bring in on Wednesday or Friday's meeting. Couple things also, um, he did mention that, you know, he wants somebody to speak. He wasn't absolutely sure yet if it were just a simple, you know, one of the board of selectmen or whoever we picked to take in, just introduce them. I've been involved from the beginning on this. If it's a simple introduction, I have no issue doing that, but if it was to get into some kind of a a nice speech that be really good, I would like to maybe see if Chaz would do that. If it's a simple, easy thing, I don't have a problem, but if it's, if he feels it's more involved and want to kind of detail things. Uh, not to try to volunteer, Chaz, but I think you'd probably speak a little better than I would.
I am, I am good with that. If if, Joe, you would like to get up and welcome them perhaps to town. And then Chaz could uh, you know, hand it over to Chaz for a more lengthy talk. I saw five to 10 minutes. Where did I see that? So I'm looking for a name and a brief bio of that person so we can introduce, and it says five to 10 minutes, which I am assuming is the length of time that they're giving the board of selectmen to talk. Am I right?
Well, that's what I kind of get out of it, but like he said, we would talk a little further today, and I'd get a better. And I don't know how we can do this, Madam Chair, if I can just, after, if I speak to him today and he feels it's going to be a lot involved, that the speech is going to be, I could reach out, send up an email to Chaz, say, listen, I will have Russell get a hold directly to Chaz, so we'll all be on the same page.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, which the chair doesn't usually do, but I I think I would move that Joe, you and Chaz um, work together with Russell Jobe to see what they're looking for as far as this um, speech goes. Uh, and um, and that the two of you work it out together to uh, represent the town and the board of selectmen at the wall that heals welcome ceremony.
Okay, so that kind of, I'm not really sure if that's a volunteer or throwing under the bus kind of thing, but.
See, I I didn't want to volunteer myself. I'll be there, but.
Joe, uh, yeah, well, I I I know that when I looked at at everything, there are two presentations involved in in uh, what's going on. One was on the first, and one, I think, was on the third.
Yep.
Um, if we could get a delineation between the two of those.
Yep, and I will get that today.
And then, yeah, I, to be honest, I, whatever the the board pleases, I'm, I have no problems doing either or. Just based upon my background, but um, you figure out what what you feel is best, Joe, and and let me know. I'm okay with whatever you decide.
Madam Chair, will it be if I get an email from from Russell, can I forward that email on to, without giving any comment or anything, on to Chaz, or he'd be in the loop? Or how do we do that?
Um, I think you should ask Russ to send it to selectmen@townsendma.gov. And I'm just keeping the wall that heals on our Monday, Wednesday, Friday agenda. I think that both of you should expect that we will have a meeting this Friday. So and next Monday. So I'll just keep the wall that heals on there, and by Friday, we should have this ironed out. So.
I'd also, I'd also like to to maybe have a couple of conversations in regards to that 1,300, because I think we should be able to to find a spot that we can get that money.
All right, so what I will do is I will reach out to D O R today to see if, because this was supposed to be on the books last year, to see if I can uh, encumber $1,300 for for the town band for next year.
I think we can.
And I do know that Betty May is the one who is the keeper of those funds. So it, she would be the one that would need to fill out the form to make the request. So I will ask on that as well.
So as soon as you know that, Madam Chair, then I can at least uh, let Russell know so they put that right into their itinerary.
Yeah, she she wasn't, I I didn't get the sense that she was opposed to it, but she did not want to take funds away from the F Y 22 band concerts, and I don't blame her. So I would agree with that, so.
Well, I'll wait to hear back from you or somebody.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that Joe and Chaz will be the speakers to represent the board of selectmen, and that um, you will, you know, work together to decide who speaks when and at what, and how much. So is there a second? I just want to.
Second, I second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
That's Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right. All right, um, moving on to the mailboxes. Joe, is this yours?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess I I'd like to at least speak in regards to the mailboxes downstairs next to the town clerk's office. I came in on Sunday to sign some paperwork and to you know, look into the mailbox and if then it. if anything needs to be brought upstairs, brought upstairs. And there was documents in there that were marked confidential and to the Board of Selectmen that were not sealed. And the only concern I have is that mailbox can be accessed, or I can, I should say, all mailboxes can be accessed by any individual at any time if they know where the key is. And I think that creates a real problem for the community, and especially for the Board of Selectmen, if we're getting confidential information in there that if other people, if they do or they don't, not accusing anybody of anything, but if that accessibility is there, I think we need to really address it, and I think we, we need to discuss that.
Okay, so I would, yeah, I, I think we do need secure boxes, at least for the Board of Selectmen, because there is confidential information that comes in. So, yeah.
All right, so I think I've, I've reached out because the concern, and I hope it's okay, that I spoke with Rob this morning, asked him to find out what we need to do to get that mailbox particularly just keyed, so that the Board of Selectmen, all three of us individually, will have a key to open it up, and nobody else has access. If everybody else wants a master key, that's okay, they all can do that. But I don't think it's appropriate that a master key should be allowed to open up the Board of Selectmen, especially with all the confidential information that goes through that box.
I agree with that.
So do we need a motion to, a motion to, to have the box keyed for just the selectmen?
I think, I make a motion that we have the mailbox for the Board of Selectmen keyed to individual keys that the Board of Selectmen only have, until time it comes that there's a TA involved, and the key gets turned over there. Over.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right, moving on, reports from board liaisons. Chaz, I know you had some.
Have anything, Joe?
No, everything's fine. I mean, I, well, I can't say that. I've been in contact with the Fire Department and the Police Department in regards to the Keeling Wall, because they're, both of those departments will be heavily involved in it. So they have also got the contact information for Russell, just to make sure that they all are on the same page, so there's no confusion. I know on Tuesday morning at nine AM, all department heads are welcome to do the walkthrough at the high school, where this is going to be set up, and the Fire, Police, and everybody will be there. So that's all I really have to say from my end.
Yeah, or do you want me to go? I think I only have one thing to say, and that is that we need to discuss about the library being able to roll over vacation. They were not included in the other discussions, and we did get that request. So I've done a little research on that, so I'm going to put that on Wednesday's schedule.
Okay.
That's all I have. So Chaz, if you have?
I had, had a Water Department meeting that I had gone to last week, and then I spoke with the Water Superintendent today. There are questions in regards to their retro pay as well, and I said to him that I'll bring it up to the Board of Selectmen. I believe that he would just need to fill out forms to encumber those, because he wants, he has, says he has money in the budget to pay for it with this, this year's budget as opposed to July.
I, I need to talk about that. When you say retro payments, if you're talking about the... I think I need more information on this, because those were going to be paid in FY twenty-two, not in FY twenty-one. The funds were moved from stabilization, and that is for the base rate pay with different contract. Now, if they're, if you're talking about something else, I guess I need more information.
What, my belief is, what we had brought, I don't think it's, maybe we should talk about it.
I guess I need more details. What, what retroactive pay are we talking about? Is there something else that is being settled other than the contract itself?
What, yes, what we agreed upon to the retro pay, the one percent or two percent, whatever that was, to bring them up to.
Collins?
Correct.
So what, what you're telling me then is that the Water Department is going to take that out of their budget and encumber it?
No, they're saying that they wanted to know if they could take it out of their current budget as opposed to the July budget.
I'm confused, because I thought when we did that at town meeting, we took that full amount of money for all the back pay, everything to get them up to Collins, and going to do it as of July first, because in the twenty-two budget.
Okay, so then.
It came from stabilization, and I will confirm, but I'm pretty sure it included the Water Department. I don't think anyone was looking to the Water Department. I maybe need to check on this, because this, that was not in my mind. But I don't know what the Water Department agreed with the town administration about, the town administrator about. So if there was some sort of agreement.
I.
That I was unaware of.
I couldn't discuss it with anybody until I brought it up in an open meeting, so.
Okay, so I want more information. I want to know if there was some agreement that the Water Department themselves would be paying for the.
It was not mentioned that there was an agreement. It just, it was asked, would they be able to take it out of the current budget, since they have money in there?
Well, that's a, that would be wonderful. So get more information on that. I, I don't even know exactly what to say. You might want to talk to Jared, because payroll is who pays that out.
So I can, yeah.
And I will say that the accountants on Friday, when we met, asked about the retro payments and asked if we were encumbering funds from this year. And Jared and I were both there, and the response was no, that we had put all that in stabilization, which is exactly how I understood it to be for the retro payments. But if the Water Department is thinking differently, certainly this is something that could be discussed. And yes, it would need to be encumbered, because those payments are not going to go out until probably the end of July.
Correct. They would need to encumber it now before the July first. That's why I'm bringing it up.
All right.
Because that negotiation is, Madam Chair, I, it was the same outcome that we had with everything else, that it was going to continue into July and have that paid. So I don't remember, unless there's a side deal made after, but in that meeting that I sat in, I didn't think of any kind of deal like that.
Right.
So I will get more information, and then I'll bring it forward.
Okay, thanks. Do you want me to add this to the, I'm going to put it under finances for the.
You could do that. Yep, you could do that. Because this was, I had the meeting just before our Selectmen's meeting, so.
Okay.
The next bit of business is with the Recreation Department. They have two new appointments for June twenty-eighth, and I'll put that in SharePoint.
Oh, additional appointments over and above the, I think we did six previously.
Yes. And then they are working on a promotional video for TCAM to post on Channel Nine in regards to their presentation that they did with the Board of Selectmen. And they're in the process of developing a public forum and another survey, because they want to get town input in regards to that. I had a brief discussion last Thursday with the Building Department, and we're, we're looking to really strengthen some, some things that are there. We'll talk about the immediate needs of the, that particular department. And then we'll, we'll talk more if we need a formal meeting in regards to how we're going to be going forward, if there's any conservation issues that need to be dealt with immediately or whatever. I'm trying to keep, because you're liaison for Conservation, and I'm liaison for the building, so I figured between you and I, we can get those issues taken care of.
I had put this on Wednesdays, but I'll say today that I did reply to one of the, we, the Board of Selectmen, have been getting all the conservation emails, and I did reply to one, just directing them to NHESP. So, and I did talk to the Building Inspector this morning, and he had also met with the potential, well, with the person who was asking the questions. And we were, we pretty much, he was more thorough than I was in his interactions. I was more high level, just saying, here's who you might want to talk to. I sent them to NHESP, the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program, to get more information. So, so things that do need to be dealt with as quickly as possible, I will give the best answer that I can.
Now, Madam Chair.
I do have that on the Wednesday agenda. I'll read it then.
Wasn't there a conservation agent on Wednesday? Last week, they came in and kind of went over a lot of stuff in the Building Department, so that they can at least move forward.
A conservation agent?
Or not agent, or a conservation representative that came in and mentioned that he went down, he looked over a lot of the stuff that.
One of the commissioners did.
Commissioner, that's the word. I'm sorry, commissioners. So is that helpful then?
That took care of some things, yes.
All right, good.
But there, that was a fine line. The person isn't really sure how to proceed. So in any event, there's that.
All right.
So go ahead, Chaz.
Okay, the next one is Planning Board. They have a Hazard Mitigation and Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. I had conversations with the, the administrator there, and she and I both agreed that Ashby has a nice little website that really talks about what their plan is. And she asked me if I could reach out to see if anybody in town would be willing to help the Planning Board put on a website much like this to get the information out in regards to what we're looking for, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. We are, there's a grant that's out there currently that's, that we're looking for to help us with some Water Department issues and other issues within the, within the town, which I thought was, you know, the, I think a lot of people in town don't understand the amount of work that we put into the MVP plan, and now we're in the implementation stage, so there's going to be information on a monthly basis going forward.
Do we need to take a vote to have you represent, do that?
I'm liaison to their.
I, I think at this point, I, my thought is, I can't take on another thing.
Yeah, they're not, they're not asking us. They're asking the community.
The community. So this is something that we could maybe ask Beth, she's on vacation this week, but when she comes back, it's a good idea. And we do have, we did apply for an MVP action grant. So, and hopefully, well, we'll, that will be positive. So we could maybe work up something to put on the website under volunteer things. We have to go through all of that and make sure that we have exactly what we want and what is needed, because I think there are some volunteer things out there that are no longer, that have already been filled, or maybe there's additional things. So that's something we could put up there.
So the person that volunteered for it in another town was willing to help any volunteer if they were interested in doing it, pointing them in the right direction. So Beth has all that information in the, in the planning office, so.
So if, if she could work up a posting for what the, or the Planning Board could work up a posting for what they want for that, so that we could get it out on the website, that would be good.
Okay. And then I did want to let you both know that I contacted both Sheila and Sheila Harrington, State Representative, and John Cronin in regards to the Greenville Bridge project as to what, if there was other funding out there in the state to help us out with that situation. I have not heard back, but I wanted you both to know that I did reach out to them.
Okay, thank you. That, I, I think I have Greenville Road funding on, I think I put it on Wednesday's agenda for the twenty-third. Let me just look here real quick. I do have it there, because I received a project update request. So I figured we'll deal with that on Wednesday.
Okay.
All right, I have a couple of things. Oh, are you still going?
One, yeah. One more. In regards to, this is because we can't talk, so I gotta, I gotta take my time out here. There is the extension over at the transfer station, okay?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we definitely need to get this taken care of. There has been an existing line that is part of the Town Centrex Line, the seventeen-sixteen, I think their extension is over there. It is a, a current line, but when you pick up that line out at the transfer station, there's just static. They don't have any. When you call in, you can call into the number, it rings, but there's no, there's no answering machine to it or anything like that. There was a, I put in to install a new line, but it's not an installation of a new line. It is a repair ta, it should be a repair ticket. And I don't know how we need to, to get that. There's a, there's a woman that, Deborah Moore, that's customer service rep, which I think does the town's information. I just wanted to talk with the board before I called her and straightened that out, or if you wanted me involved in it, or how.
Okay, I'll jump in here, because I did get an email from her, because Carolyn's email is right now being forwarded, well, not, the away message says, contact me. The emails don't get forwarded to me, but the away message says, contact me. So I did get a mail question from her. She wanted me to go out to Greenville Road and see if the line, if the line worked, because from there end, it looks like the line is working. It's the way I understood it. So I got this on Friday. So I, I guess the question is, what should I do with that? Should I go out to the transfer station and see if the line works?
I'm telling you, it does not work.
It does not work, okay.
It's a repair ticket that. In the correspondence that I see here, we just need to let her know that they need to do a repair on it. It's not an installation of a new line.
Okay, all right. So I will respond to her, not an installation of a new line. I didn't know anything about, not an installation of a new line, repair ticket, it is static. I think that's what she was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they probably need to have somebody to go out there.
All right, so I will respond to her on that. And what I, what I might do is CC Selectmen, so that you all can see it as well, whatever that is. well, whatever that is, so that everybody's on the same page. All right, um, I, I have two things under, are, are we done with liaison reports? Yes. Am I muted? No. All right, so under, um, communications, we're moving on to five-point three announcement of communications. Um, I received, um, an inquiry, uh, from Christopher McDermott at MRPC. Last year, they had put in for a grant to update, um, Townsend's transition plan, ADA plan. Um, the last one was published in the late two thousands. It was strongly encouraged that we reapply, and I did attend the, um, debrief on why we didn't get the grant. One of the things was, um, that they would have liked us to have, uh, an ADA committee, a Committee on Disabilities, I think is the official name. And I did ask Katie at the senior center to put an announcement in the most recent, um, senior center bulletin. We have had something up on the website, uh, for volunteers. So we really need volunteers to come forward to be willing to work on this in town. Um, so what they wanted to know is, was the community still interested in reapplying to get a grant to help us with writing the plan and, um, to set a time to discuss it. So, uh, feel free to let us know when would work for you and anyone else you think should be involved. So I wanted to return, uh, respond to Chris that, um, you know, what the town's wishes were on this. So what are your thoughts?
I'm waiting for the vice chair before I jump in.
Okay.
I think, I agree with you, Madam Chair. Do, do what we have to, get some people to work on it and try to make it so we can try to get that grant this time.
Um, I have been involved in many grant writings over the past six, seven years, and almost every grant that I've touched upon asks about the ADA plan for the town in some way or another, whether, uh, it, it has to do with, um, a, a town building or any other, um, grant that we're looking for, um, sidewalks, um, all of that. Uh, I think this is, uh, should be a number one, um, thing that we do immediately. So mine, my first comment is absolutely, we need to contact, um, Chris and tell him we, we do need to move forward on this. Um, having said that, I have contacted several different people within the town in regards to this. Um, my, um, my initial thought was to go out to some professionals that I know. Um, I have contacted a, uh, I was actually having a conversation with an account, with a, um, architect this morning. Uh, there are several, um, architects that do live in town that would probably be more than glad to, um, put some of their time in to help us out with it. Um, I know that there is a retired architect engineer, AE, um, that we would be able to, um, get some resources from as well, that would be interested in helping us out. Um, I'd like to see, um, those with disabilities within our town to also be part of this. Um, when we say, um, um, Americans with disabilities, people think of wheelchairs, but it goes much more than that. These are people with canes. These are people with walking disabilities. These are vision, the hearing, um, you know, uh, not being able to, uh, reach to certain heights like for ATMs and that kind of stuff. Um, so it, it does, it does go beyond just a, a wheelchair type thing. Um, so we are looking for anybody. We should be looking for anybody that, uh, would be able to provide us some input for this. Um, having said that, I've also had conversations with Representative Sheila Harrington on another front in regards to this. Um, for, uh, any, um, affordable housing that we build, we have to build them what's called the aged in place, and that's when the, the stove can be lowered, the sinks can be lowered and that kind of stuff. Um, there are all very standards that, that really need to be met. Um, so I think, uh, representatives from certain boards, um, also need to be contacted as well. Um, not only just like Board of Health, but maybe even, uh, uh, you know, planning that kind of stuff, the Housing Authority, absolutely. So my thought is definitely we need to get some, uh, we need to get something established and ask for volunteer forms and get a committee set up so that we can let Chris know that we definitely have, uh, um, the interest and this is set up and we need to move forward on it.
Um, so, uh, can I have a motion to, uh, contact Chris and tell him that we as the town are definitely interested in applying, reapplying through MRPC, um, for the grant funding for the, um, a transition plan?
Uh, I, I move that we allow the chair to contact, uh, Christopher McDermott at MRPC to say that the town of Townsend is interested in applying for the Municipal Americans with Disability Act Improvement Grant Program for the fiscal year twenty-two cycle.
Second?
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. And I would just encourage anybody that's interested to turn in a volunteer response form, for I think it's called the Committee on Disabilities, uh, on the webpage. So, and there should be a little ad in the senior center paper on that as well. So, um, the second thing that I have is, uh, for Thursday's, um, meeting to put together a regional, um, group on climate change. So I'm just going to read this into the record. I did send out to department heads to notify their boards on this, but I, I am not sure that I included this letter. Uh, so this came on May twenty-sixth. Dear local official, the Pepperell Select Board invites you to join in a virtual meeting on June twenty-fourth at seven PM to discuss organizing a regional climate change network in an effort to facilitate our municipal actions to meet the Commonwealth's goal of achieving a zero carbon footprint by 2050. We recognize that while each municipality can individually accomplish much to address climate change, there are likely some efforts that would benefit from a regionalized effort. Some examples might include shared solar energy projects, water resource protections, wildlife corridors, and farmland protections, et cetera. We believe funding from the state will prioritize towns that work together to resolve climate change threats. In addition, a number of pub- public climate change groups have been forming in our communities and providing them with a municipal resource to work with would likely strengthen the success of local initiatives. Pepperell recently appointed a climate change council. They could act as a liaison with the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and our select board and inform us on how our town can pursue climate change init- initiatives. If you, our neighbors, also adopt the idea of appointing climate change entities, we will create a network of talents that can work together on advising state, regional, and local leaders. This invitation has been sent to the municipalities in the voting districts of Representatives, Lori Trahan, Senator Ed Kennedy, and Representative Sheila Harrington. Representative Lori Trahan will be attending and speaking in support of the initiative. Please RSVP by June twenty-first to the Pepperell Select Board at selectboard@town-pepperell MA.us. A remote meeting link and agenda will be provided to those who RSVP. We look forward to creating a stronger team effort to resolve the climate challenge we all face. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to hearing from you, and this was signed by the Pepperell Select Board. So I did RSVP to this, and I did receive the link, and I sent out the information to, um, boards, uh, well, town employees and a few boards that, um, expressed interest. And hopefully that word went out. I know several did forward it on. So today's the day. If you want to participate, the twenty-first is today, so, um, please let selectboard@town-pepperell MA.us know. And I did ask, was this open to all boards beyond the select board? And they said absolutely yes. So please, if you're interested, feel free to contact them.
I won't, I won't be able to attend that, Chair.
So that's, you know, it's, it's, um, it's up to you, but I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, so. Um, and that is it for what I have right now. It is plenty. So, um, our next meeting is June twenty-third at noon. Um, the agenda has been posted and I will be, uh, revising based on what happened today. So look for that repost, hopefully sometime tomorrow. And does anybody have anything further?
No, Madam Chair, I just forwarded to the selectmen the fire department request, so that's in the email to the selectmen.
All right, I, I will put that then on the, um, agenda for Wednesday. So, anything further?
I make a motion we adjourn?
Second?
All those in favor of adjourning at one forty-one PM, please say aye.
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, aye.
Veronica Cal, aye. All right, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Guys.